Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meetings of the Planning Commission. If I can have you all, excuse me, before we go do that, I forgot. Can I have the clerk call the roll, please?
Here.
Mr. Idukas?
Here.
Chair Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Anstott?
Here.
And Commissioner King?
Here.
All right, and...
Okay, if I can have your stamp of the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, moving on to the agenda, item four. This is the annual meeting to elect a chair and vice chair for the new year and set the scheduled hearing for the meetings the rest of the year. Director, will you take it?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Rodriguez. So just a couple of things. I'd like to welcome, welcome Commissioner King for his first meeting. Very happy to have you here at the county. And I would like to acknowledge just the good work of Commissioner Kestley that we've had the last couple of years from the same district. She's really done an amazing job as a planning commissioner. And then to also the outgoing chair, Chair Rodriguez, for all of your good work this year. It was a difficult schedule with all of the items going on. So thank you very much for always running a very nice and smooth meeting. So with that, I'm going to ask for nominations for the chair of the Planning Commission.
I have a nomination.
Commissioner Anstott?
I nominate Commissioner Idukas, chairman.
Okay, and are there any other nominations?
I would second that.
Second the nomination. So if there's no other nominations, then I will close the nomination and take the vote.
All right, let's see.
I second, but that's all right.
Oh.
Okay, we got a vote here?
Did you just want to take a roll call on that vote, or is it coming up?
I'm way off today.
No.
I can't bring it back up.
Thank you.
So I can call the vote. It did record. Would you like me to call vote for on that?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Idukas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Aye.
Commissioner Anstott?
Yes.
And Commissioner White?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
So congratulations to Chair Idukas. And then so I'll leave it for you for the nomination of the vice chair and the vote for the annual schedule.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner White for vice chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
All right, Nora, and...
Please vote.
Come in. Now let's see if this works. Yay!
Very good. The next order of business is to call for a vote on the annual schedule of the Planning Commission, the hearing location, the start time, and the day of the week as posted by staff. So we do this on Thursdays at 8:30 here as needed. Does it have to be a motion?
Could we discuss something first? Could we discuss something first? Now I'm here. The scheduling, you know, we get the handout that this one went through June. And it's darn near impossible to figure that out in June for a retired person like myself. But the thing that's bothered me is the number of continuances we have. Because we'll pick a date and it'll seemingly be clear, and it'll be continued once or twice. And I understand there are things that happen, additional information. But do we really have to continue them as often as we do? I mean, seriously. I mean, isn't there some level of something to require a continuance? Because it destroys schedules when you're trying to plan lots of things. It's just a general comment. And I know you have a tough job. And I know the evidence and the people come in fragmented. But it's awfully hard, especially to look that far down the line and plan something or don't plan something that's important to you, whether it's personal or business, and then have something changed so that you've got to change something down there. It's really hard on the people that sit up here. And I was just, I guess I'd ask you to redouble your efforts to make sure you've got everything you need and warn the people who are applying or doing or objecting that get it in by such and such a date. I had hoped that we'd have tougher rules about getting documentation in for us. And I thought that might help solve that problem. But I guess I'm just grousing here today because it's awfully difficult to schedule something or make a note of something and plan your life around something that's a couple of months down the line. And you, you know, you order your life in such a way to do it, and then it gets changed, and it just creates problems.
So Commissioner Anstott, to address that. It's not hearings that are being continued. It's hearings that are on the tentative agenda that are being moved to a future date. So it's not a continued hearing. So the tentative agenda, and here's the issue with it. It's tentative. We put something on there on the time that we think it may go. But if we put something on the website and we get good public comments, right? We don't want to come because we said we're going to come. We want to address the comments. And sometimes that takes another week or so to be able to do that. Sometimes it's a grant deadline. I mean, there's a lot of reasons. Sometimes the applicant gets sick or they can't make it that day. So there's a lot of reasons. We don't take things off the tentative agenda in a casual manner, and we don't put it on in a casual manner, right? So when we put it on, we have all intentions of going. But that said, it is tentative, and there's a whole host of reasons behind the scene that things may go or may not go. Now, on things that are very critical and we need all five commissioners here, we're very certain that when we put an item on there, like the upcoming wildlife corridors, that that item is going to stay on there, right? So, but there's a host of reasons, and we'll go through it when we go through the agenda today, that things have also moved, right? So there's a host of reasons why those things have moved. And I'm happy to explain them, why, when they move, why they've moved. But we want to give the public as much notice as we can by saying we're going to hear this item either this day or around this day to put it on the tentative agenda. And then we also want to give the planning commissioners as much notice when we remove it to free your schedule. So that happens every time that we're here. And the moment that we know something is going to be removed, we send a notice out to all of you to release your schedule for that day. I understand it's...
I didn't understand that, you know, when someone asked me, and you said it, I assumed that's the target date. But you're saying it's tentative, and I just have to comport myself because it is in fact tentative. And I understand what you're saying. It just makes it awfully hard. That's all.
Well, thank you for that. There's a motion that I made to have it same time, same channel. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Please vote.
Hold on. It won't let me do mover. Hold on. There we go. Commissioner Anstott, you seconded it, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, next item on the agenda is public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. I don't have any cards. Seeing none, moving forward. Item six is approval of the December 13, 2018 minutes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So here's why we're here, and thank you for your patience while we did this technical stuff. This is item PL 180034. It's Ed Bennett for the Thatcher School. We'll have presentation by staff.
We need to do disclosures.
Good morning, Chair Idukas.
Oh, I apologize.
What?
Before we have staff presentation, we have to have disclosures.
Okay.
I'd forgotten that. Commissioner White.
Okay, I've known the Thatcher School for more than half a century now. The first time playing tennis for Santa Paula High School against Thatcher. I have had a tour of part of the campus by Mr. Bennett not long ago. I have a couple of in-laws who work there. On the previous Thatcher case that came before us, out of an abundance of caution, probably an overabundance of caution, I recused myself. However, this week, in consultation with county council, I've concluded there's no requirement for me to recuse myself. And so I will not today. I believe I can be a fair and objective arbiter of what comes before us today.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Anstott?
I have no disclosures.
No, no ex parte.
I have disclosures. Mr. Bennett was kind enough to take me on a grand tour on his golf cart around and through the school and pointed out the different things that are planned on this very, very long-term, very comprehensive-looking project. And I believe that there was no information that isn't included in the staff report. But it sure put flesh on the bones, so I appreciate it. Now we'll have staff report. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Good morning, Chair Idukas and commissioners and county council. I'm Becky Linder, here to present to you case number PL 18-0034. The applicant and property owner is the Thatcher School. I also wanted to mention briefly the errata sheet that was presented to you this morning. It has two items on it. One was a modification to Public Works watershed protection, district condition number 30 for surface water quality. And the other item was a typo addition to the subsequent mitigated negative declaration to add a word "not" in the first sentence of that item. So moving on. The applicant requests a modification of CUP PL 17-0034 for construction and implementation of the Thatcher School master plan and the granting of a related discretionary tree permit for the encroachment and monitoring of five protected trees. The proposed project site is located at 5025 Thatcher Road at the northeast corner of McAndrew Road and Thatcher Road, approximately two miles east of the city of Ojai and two miles north of Highway 150. The project site has split general plan and zoning designations of rural and open space. The proposed project area is located entirely within the rural designation of our A20 acre area. This also shows the temporary residential units and dark sky overlay. The project site is surrounded by land used for agriculture, open space, and rural residential uses. The Thatcher School was founded in 1989 and has continually operated as a private educational institution ever since then. The first master plan for the Thatcher Campus was approved by the county in 1964. The staff report details the land use approval history. The current CUP PL 17-0034 expires in June of 2023. Under the current CUP, 225 boarding students, 50 faculty and staff live on campus. In addition, 25 day students are authorized to attend the Thatcher School. There are 75, approximately 75 employees working on campus that do not live on-site as well. The applicant requests that a modified CUP be granted to authorize a 10-year build-out of 15 projects and a 30-year operational extension. The applicant is also requesting the discretionary tree permit, as I said, for the encroachment and monitoring of more than five protected trees. It's approximately 29 trees. The proposed project occurs within previously developed areas of the Thatcher Campus, and no change in the number of faculty, staff, or students is requested. The master plan build-out will be completed in three phases over a 10-year period, which are listed in Table 2 of the staff report. This slide shows or discusses the largest changes to occur in Phase 1. And that includes demolition of two buildings, the Humanities AST and the Camp Storage Buildings. The Humanities AST, well, both of which are within the existing Thatcher School historic district. And both structures will be replaced by the Creativity and Technology Building, the CNT building. This slide shows the existing campus, including the new dining hall and kitchen approved in January 2018, which some of your commission was here when I presented that last year. And it's located, let me try this one, just so you can see. Where's my pointer? I believe that's the new dining hall and kitchen. So the site plan shows the locations of the proposed master plan projects with a corresponding key plan project list. I know it's pretty small to see it, but it is in your staff report. Here we have the proposed CNT building and landscaping, which will replace the Humanities AST building and Camp Storage Shed. The CNT building includes construction of a 21,712 square foot multi-use building consisting of faculty offices, classrooms, collaborative student work areas, workshops, studios, labs, lecture rooms, and outdoor work areas. And installation of temporary classrooms will supplement the loss of Humanities classroom while construction of the new CNT building is completed. And this is an elevation of the CNT building. And this slide shows the temporary classrooms that will be installed while the CNT building is being completed. It's 8,000, almost 8,500 square feet of temporary classrooms. This is the fitness center expansion plan. This activity includes construction of a 2,000-square-foot addition to the existing approximately 4,300-square-foot fitness center. And that will include adding a new fitness room, patio, and trainer room. This slide shows an overall map of the rainwater tank locations. And Phase 1 includes construction of 17 water storage tanks ranging in size from 1,500 gallons to 120,000 gallons. The water in these tanks will be used to flush toilets in the campus dormitories. As part of Phase 2, construction of 21 tanks located in the equestrian area of the campus will be collected there and will be used to wash down horses. And here's an elevation showing you the various sizes and ranges of the rainwater capture tanks. The faculty residence, this is a slide of the faculty houses and garages to be built as part of Phase 3, with the exception of one garage that will be built as part of Phase 1. And is presented to show your commission Thatcher's intent to maintain consistent architectural elements throughout the master plan. In addition, five new tennis courts with bathroom and storage will be built as part of Phase 3. And this will be located at the southwest corner of the campus, located below the existing tennis courts. Tennis lighting is not permitted, and it's not requested. I'm going to have a little discussion of the environmental document. And so we'll go into some details here. On January 11, 2018, the county Planning Commission approved the existing CUP and DTP for PL 17-0034. In conjunction, the county approved a mitigated negative declaration, an MND, which was adopted and analyzed and addressed the project's potential environmental impacts under CEQA. The county staff prepared a subsequent MND for the master plan and made it available for public review and comment from November 20, 2018 to December 19, 2018. The purpose of the subsequent MND is to evaluate whether the proposed modification would result in new significant impacts that were not identified in the adopted MND for the existing project. The subsequent MND, together with the adopted MND, shall then be used by the county when considering approval of the proposed project modification. The proposed modified CUP and DTP will not cause new significant impacts as compared to those identified in the adopted MND. However, the amount of new impervious surfaces resulting from the proposed master plan project requires a new mitigation measure for the management of surface water quality. This analysis and description of the new mitigation measure is included in item 2D of the subsequent MND. The subsequent MND also includes mitigation measures from the previous MND. Imposition of this new mitigation measure and conformance with the conditions of approval will reduce potential impacts of the proposed modification to less than significant levels. The Thatcher School campus is located within the Ojai MAC boundaries. At the Ojai MAC meeting of October 15, 2018, staff made a presentation on the proposed project. Neighbors attended the meeting and expressed concerns regarding project-specific and cumulative construction traffic impacts. In response to neighborhood concerns related to the current Thatcher School construction traffic, Thatcher has implemented actions to address these concerns and intends to continue to implement these actions as part of the construction of the three phases of the master plan. In addition, condition of approval number 28, construction noise, requires posting a 24-hour phone number and contact person at the front of the school for public report to report concerns regarding construction traffic and construction-related noise. It also discusses the days and hours of construction that is allowed or permitted under the CUP. In addition, Section C and Page 18 of your staff report discusses cumulative construction traffic and noise impacts that may result from conflicting schedules, construction schedules that may coincide with the proposed modifications at the existing Krishnamurti Retreat, also located off of McAndrew Road in close proximity to the Thatcher School. The project is located within the city of Ojai Sphere of Influence. The city, the planning division notified the city of Ojai of the proposed project. And as of the date of this hearing, no comments have been received by the city. Response letters were received from Caltrans and DTSC that did not require any response from staff. No public comments on the draft MND were received by county staff. A legal notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the proposed project boundary, state clearinghouse, local CHMASH representatives. And in addition, a legal ad was published in the Star, County Star. Email notification was sent to other interested parties, including those neighbors who attended the MAC meeting. And as of the date of this hearing, emails from two neighbors were received regarding their concerns about construction traffic and removal of tall trees for nesting birds. The mitigation measures adopted as part of January 2018 MND still apply to the proposed master plan and are listed on this slide. The new mitigation measure for surface water quality will ensure runoff from new impervious surfaces does not contribute pollutants or degrade water quality downstream of downstream surface waters. The project is consistent with all applicable general plan and area plan policies and is found to be compatible with adjacent land uses and is consistent with the required findings for a CUP and DTP. This concludes my presentation. The applicant, Ed Bennett, director of facilities, and Blossom Piddick, head of school for Thatcher, and their team and their representative, Lisa Woodburn, are here to answer any questions your commission may have regarding the proposed master plan project. Are there any questions of staff?
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Do any commissioners have a question?
There is no reference of violations of the CUP or modifications. I assume there's no history of violations.
No history of violations, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have any question? I have a couple of questions. One thing I was wondering, is there a need for any kind of methane recovery with regard to any of these projects that are before us?
I haven't heard about that. I'd have to defer to either their representative, Lisa Woodburn, or the school.
Okay.
Methane recovery for gas?
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't think that it was before us. But one of the things just raised the question. I'll direct the question to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now I will open the public hearing. And the only card I have is Ken Radke and Adam Sharkey. I don't have speaker cards. Do you want it to be Ed Bennett?
I believe Blossom Piddick wanted to come up and speak.
Okay. After you speak, fill out a speaker card.
Good morning.
Needs to have a card.
Thank you. I will fill out the speaker card. I'm sorry that we got confused on that front. I'm Blossom Beatty Piddick. I'm the head of school at the Thatcher School. Very grateful to be here this morning with all of you and grateful to the staff for their work in the presentation and to all of you for the time that you're giving us this morning. As Becky mentioned, Thatcher School, it's been around since 1889. The CUP that's in front of you is really a plan to bring the school up to current standards. There are some... There are some delayed and deferred upgrades for our campus. As she mentioned, this is not about the school changing its, its size, but just about us getting our facilities and our programs up to the level of excellence that, that we expect of ourselves. I myself, though I'm a new head of school, I have been at Thatcher for 16 years as a member of the community, as a faculty member and administrator. Like many of the people on campus, as you heard, we are residential school with 90% of our faculty living on campus. Like those other faculty members, I am a member of the neighborhood of the east end of Ojai where I, like my colleagues, have raised my kids and feel very much a part of the community and neighborhood that we are living in. So, so we are very focused on, on serving that neighborhood well as we also bring our school up to its level of excellence. As mentioned, I have here several members from the, my team who have worked on this plan. Our Director of Facilities, Ed Bennett, is here. Our Director of Finance and Operations, Jim Poulsen, is here. And our Director of Project Management, Rod Laird, is here also. We have architects, Ken Radke and Adam Sharkey, who you read the speaker. So, we welcome your questions at this time about this project. And again, just thank you for, for your time and consideration here.
I, I don't have your last name here.
It's Piddock.
Piddock.
Piddock, yes.
Are there any questions of Ms. Piddock?
Can I break it down for you?
Okay, you're off the hook. Who's next? Is it Mr. Bennett?
Yes, you want to come up?
Sure, if there are questions.
You know what? I'll ask you the question now. And thank you again for touring me around and showing me, it's, looking at those plans and knowing how much is going on, you know, reading through the, the report. It was extremely helpful to, to see it in life. One thing that I wondered is, when you said that the water is captured underneath that field and it goes anaerobic, that, is that before us today? Is that something that, that is part of this project?
What's a part of this project is we are proposing to install two tanks. A tank on the north end of that field and a tank on the south end of the field. And what that will enable us to do is after 30 days, the water, which it sort of sits in a bathtub, and that's, and that's where the, the grass gets its moisture from, and obviously then you don't lose as much to evaporation. But after about 30 days, the water there goes anaerobic, and, and so what you have to do is just drain the, the fields.
Is there any methane that's emitted as, as a result of that?
No.
Okay.
And so what will happen is, is the tanks will drain it, or the, the field will drain it into tanks now, and we can reoxygenate it with just blowing some air into it, and then we'll be able to put it back into the field. So it's one of those things where in, in theory, it will save us about 1.2 million gallons a year.
Any other questions of the speaker?
Mr. Bennett, thank you. I had one question relative to the change in the stormwater management condition. And, and my question is this, and you'll forgive my ignorance, but if Mother Nature doesn't cooperate in terms of the amount of stormwater that needs to be captured, or the absence of stormwater that needs to be captured, will there be any, any need for some kind of additional stormwater management, a catch basin or something, if the, if the catch basins overflow, as an example?
Well, and I have my civil engineer, and if you need to help me with this, please don't be afraid to, to let me know. But currently, the, there's two tank project, well, three if you include the one we just spoke about. But the, the one that is currently funded by a grant, and we, and we have the, the funds for, captures rainwater off the roofs of all of our dormitories. And that's in a total amount of, of tank of 923,000 gallons. And with respect to filling it up, the, the, the design, or the, you know, with the six-inch rain, those tanks were filled up. So maybe your question is, then what happens after we fill the tanks up? And then, you know, as a part of the project, they get connected to the current stormwater system. Is that correct, Suzanne? So it just, it goes into our current retention basins, it would overflow into the current retention basins and that sort of thing. Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I just want to be reassured that none of that stormwater runoff is going to wind up in the adjacent creeks and degrade stormwater, the quality of water downstream.
What, under this proposal, one of the things that we talk about is that this project will enhance any downstream stormwater runoff. The other project within the horse program, which captures another, I think that's 600,000 gallons of, of water in, in the horse program. Again, it does the same thing. By us capturing the water off the roof, it, it mitigates stormwater going downstream.
Okay, you know, I understand, I just, you know, the problem is unintended consequences, and you've already indicated that there is an overflow point, but you're telling us that we already have enough measures in place to prevent any degradation downstream.
Yes, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Bennett? Thank you, sir. Am I to understand that these, this speaker is only, for questions only? Are there, are there any other questions that the commissioner, the commission has of any of the representatives of the Thatcher School? Saying none. Okay, I don't have any other cards in favor or opposed, so there's no need for rebuttal? Is there any follow-up from staff? Okay, I will close the public hearing and invite discussion.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to move the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
I have one comment I'd like to get on the record, if I might.
Certainly.
And it's really by way of kudos. I come from a municipal planning commission where everything, every condition that was required to protect the environment elicited squeals of, that's just too expensive. As I read the staff report and the mitigated negative depth and subsequent mitigated negative depth, I was wholly impressed with the stewardship that Thatcher imposes on the land that they have been bequeathed. And I think it needs to be said that you folks are to be congratulated and that you're setting a stellar example in the county for the new rookie commissioner. I have to say, wow, really impressed. Thank you for the good work.
Anything else? Please vote. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
And thank you again. All right. So the next item on the agenda, we're moving on. You don't need to stay. I mean, you can stay.
Thank you all for showing up and coming here on your morning in the rain.
Six inches of rain.
We had two and a half in Ojai last night.
Yeah, alone.
Wow.
Okay. The next item is discussion, report by the planning director on board decisions and other matters.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair Dukas. A couple of things. The board heard an item that your planning commission had heard about a year previous on, on what was the Bentley Oil and Gas for an existing oil and gas operation up in the Ojai area. So they heard that item on Tuesday, you might have read that in the paper. The vote was three to two to uphold your planning commission's recommendation. So that's how that went. Let's go over your agenda. We have the January 31st, the Habitat Connectivity and Wildlife Corridor Ordinance is on your agenda. All of that information that you have in your possession, all of that information is uploaded onto our website. There is an awful lot of outreach that is happening on that. Each individual property owner in that very large corridor will receive a letter from the county saying that this is, that this is proposed before the planning commission. And there is a list on our website also of questions from the community that we've heard. So the website has all of those questions on it. And so that is over and above the requirements of both the county and the state for notification, but we want people to know what's going on. So there's thousands of letters going out this week to the community members. So that will be on the 31st. If anybody wants a briefing on that, I think that there's a couple of briefings already scheduled. We would suggest that, that we can either, you know, come, you can come in here and, and we'll sit down with you and staff to go over it, or we can come out to you, either way. So if you have questions on that, please reach out and, and let me know. The issue of February 21st, so this gets right to what Commissioner Anstott was talking about, things being on the tentative agenda and then being moved off of the tentative agenda. So we're moving the items from the 21st to the 7th. And so they're, they're still on tentatively, so those things are the VC Resilient Coastal Adaptation Project. And that is because the staff needs a little bit more time to, to work through their presentation. And so we're moving that item on to the 7th. You have that today, along with a cover letter, the VC Resilient Coastal Adaptation Project. So you each have a hard copy of that document, and so that is being put on the 7th. I don't see it being moved from the 7th at this time, so that, that looks like that will be a, a date for that. And then we have an appeal of, of a notice of violation that was also scheduled for that date. And the reason that that item is moving is because staff did a site visit out there, and there's some questions that arose as part of that. So we don't want to come back here twice. We want to address all of the issues at one time. So we're, we plan to put that back on the March 7th agenda as well. And then we don't have any other hearings scheduled after that. What's going on at the Board of Supervisors is we are planning on moving your recommendations and thoughts on the wildlife corridor through to the Board of Supervisors for their March 12th hearing. So we've tentatively put that also on the board's calendar. So your recommendations out of January 31st will be heard by the board on March 12th. So that is all I have for you, unless you have some questions for me.
Yes, the next item is items the planning commission may wish to introduce.
I have a question.
Yes.
Some of, when we had the Santa Monica Mountains and issue of fire clearance to residents, et cetera, et cetera, do we have any idea how many homes were lost because they weren't cleared, or sufficient area was not cleared around them? There was an argument over 200 feet, 100 feet. People were quite stricken about the amount of more and the cost of expense of doing that, thousands and thousands of dollars to clear around your home. I just wonder what the impact of the fire was on those houses or properties that were at that.
Is there any way to get a feel for that? Because I wouldn't mind coming back to that if it's necessary.
Right, so that item has already been heard before your planning commission, and you did address some concerns like that. And those concerns, we did address prior to it going to the board. It was on the board's agenda for December the 6th, and we removed it from the agenda to, you know, allow the community to focus on their recovery efforts. So that issue will come back, you know, probably later in the spring to, to be taken to the board. So the issue of fire clearance, right, there isn't a, there isn't any direct correlation that I have heard that's come to my attention that said, if you would have only had 300 feet instead of 150 feet, that particular house at that address would be saved. So that, that isn't, you know, there'll, there'll be a long thorough discussion on defensible space, on brush clearance, on mitigation. All of those issues that we raised to your planning commission will be raised to the board, and we'll show them how we have, what solutions that we have to those potential issues that the planning commission raised. So there was a numerous amount of homes lost in the Santa Monica Mountains, and the staff is working very closely, not only with the camp out there, the camp has Kramer, lost a vast majority of their structures. And I was out there, along with the building official and many members from our staff, figuring out how to get the camp back up and, and reworking. That was the only commercial property that was lost in the county. But there's several single-family homes that were lost too. So each one of those homes has a different set of standings. How were they permitted to begin with? How do they want to, you know, do they want to build back in the same scope and scale? Or do they want to build bigger now? So each property owner is coming in, and we're having those one-on-one conversations for the rebuilding effort.
Well, it does sort of spill over into the wildlife corridor, because there are restrictions regarding things that can be done. And I was wondering if we could learn a lesson from the past fire and see whether or not the proposed ordinance may have, may trigger fire problems and related problems.
But I think you'll see, there was a, and it's not on the agenda, so I don't want to talk about it in too much depth for the wildlife corridors, but you will see, there was a lot of coordination between the planning department and the Fire Protection District on that ordinance, a lot of sit-down meetings. And you'll see, and there's an exhibit from the fire chief that he believes that that ordinance is, is adequately protected from the fire protection issues.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there anything else?
I have, I have something.
Is it before, before you? Is there anyone else that wants to say something? No? No?
About that?
No, not about that necessarily.
Can I segue in on, on that?
Steve, I just want you to go last. I just want you to go last.
Thank you.
If I can segue in on Commissioner Anstott's comments. I would like, as a commissioner, I'd like to see something that tallies, excuse me, excuse me, tallies the loss, property loss, structure specifically, obviously, and the impact, particularly with private residences, what the, what the clearance was, 100 versus 200-foot clearance, if that had any impact at all. I'm still a little, and I heard the fire chief when he was here before, and I understand what he said, but from a homeowner's, homeowner's perspective, I mean, 200 feet will let you sleep a little bit easier than 100-foot clearance. And I'm just curious, it's still not clear on why the, it's, you know, it's locked at 100, and it's not unlike, like LA County that has 200-foot requirement. It's the same mountain range, same terrain, except for the jurisdictional differences between. And again, I don't know what LA County lost, I'm sure, they obviously lost a lot as well, certainly more, probably more than Ventura County. But I'm just curious if that, if that can be put together in some oral fashion or something.
Well, so, so Chief Lorenzen did address that very issue when he was testifying before you, and his thoughts between the 100 and the 200, and his very specific that he did not believe that 200 was necessary and did not make any recommendation that we, that we changed that. So that was the testimony that, that he put forward, and that's a, that's an ordinance and a policy, you know, that is under the Ventura County Fire Protection District. So I can, you know, if your, if your commission was wanting to talk about that topic again, I could probably invite someone from the planning, I mean, from the Fire Protection District to come over, but, you know, I, I believed his testimony was pretty clear on that topic.
Well, go ahead.
I'm sorry, are you done?
I was gonna say, I can understand, you know, there's a cost. I was gonna say, I can understand, you know, there's a cost involved in, for, for private property owner, a homeowner, it's, it's less costly to have, just to require a 100-foot setback. But the reality is that it, they're not really encouraged to do a 200-foot setback even if they can afford to do it and want to do it. And that's where the conundrum seems to be at.
Are you, are you just referring to the Santa Monica Mountains? Because in, in other areas of the county that are outside of the Scenic Resource Protection Overlay Zone, and outside of the Santa Monica Mountains, that has the Coastal Act overlay on it, right, that you have to comply with the, with the, with the State Coastal Act, you can do more brush clearance, right? In the vast majority of the county, you can, you know, unless you're taking out an oak tree or something else that has, or you're going into wetlands, you can do brush, you know, a lot more brush clearance.
Okay.
Is that the same kind of fee structure involved in that?
There's, there's not a fee structure for brush clearance outs, in the planning department, unless we're analyzing it under the Scenic Resource Protection Overlay Zone, or we're analyzing it in the coastal zone that has protections, right? In other areas of the county, um, you would go through the Fire Protection District.
Commissioner White.
I think it is a good idea to bring the Fire Department back before us to discuss this issue, because it seems like that is the issue that people are concerned about. And I think we need to recognize that neither wildlife corridors nor ESHA are in effect, or were in effect prior to these devastating wildfires that we've had. You can't say, oh, it was because the wildlife corridors and houses burned in the Santa Monica Mountains. There is no such program in effect. It is important, as, as we adopted, uh, when we dealt with ESHA, uh, which looked especially at Santa Monica Mountains, uh, we, we expressed some concerns that the Fire Department, um, rule in again on, on what they recommend for, for clearance. Would be great to get them back.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Anstott.
My swan song. I'd like to announce that I have tendered my resignation as a planning commissioner effective on the conclusion of this meeting. I participated with my supervisor in helping select a successor. I think you'll all be extremely pleased. This person is well-versed and will not miss a beat. I'm not going to disclose the name, because I would prefer to let the supervisor do that, but I can tell you that you're in good hands. I'm not sure how many years I've done this, but it has given me a golden opportunity to give back to the county, uh, for what I have had, or consider, at least in my situation, a fairly successful career, both for that and, and my family. We've been here since the 1850s, and we've watched it grow. So I feel like I owe the county, I think I've served the county. We have things going on in our lives that you guys know about. Recludes me from giving the time necessary to successfully do this job. So for those reasons, and for the time, time and grade involved, I'm resigning. It's difficult for a lot of reasons. I really enjoy the work, I just can't devote the time to it. I would leave you one thought, same thought I give you and have given you for years, it's water. Everything that comes in front of you, everything everybody wants to do, everything that's in the general plan, all requires water, and we don't have enough. I've been at odds on many projects, which I think shouldn't have been built because we didn't have an adequate water supply. I see it everywhere, and I see the building continuing inventor in Oxnard without a guaranteed source of water. So I would request that you view every project that comes before you with a special scrutiny, with an eye towards that. And until this region, until this region adopts a water plan, uh, I just see it's very hard to achieve the goals that are sought in the general plan. And it would be, is now and has been my priority to see that we do something. It's, after looking at all the alternatives out there, it would honestly appear to me there's only one alternative, and that sits right out here, the ocean. And everyone will tell us it's hard, it's expensive, and the Coastal Commission this and that, but I really don't think there's any choice if you want this county to grow and prosper. Anyway, I'll leave you with that thought, and it's been a pleasure. I've made lots of friends, um, and we'll miss them. But I've also offered to volunteer for my, my supervisor to help out when I can and will, so goodbye to you guys.
Commissioner Anstott, it has been wonderful working with you, and I remember precisely when you came, it was the Simi Valley landfill. And, um, and ever since then, uh, your contributions have been on point and welcomed, valued, respected. We'll miss you.
Thank you. Let's go home.
Well, I would like to add a, a big thank you, Steve. I mean, I'm a rookie here on the planning commission, but I've known Steve for more than half a century, going to school with him in Santa Paula, and has been my friend all that time, and will continue to be. I, I sure appreciate your having been here on this commission to mentor me in what goes on here, and we'll miss you, and wish you luck with what's coming before you.
Thank you. Steve, it's been a while. I couldn't tell you how many years, certainly, certainly, certainly more than I care to think about, because that means I've been here longer.
That's right. You are too.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, thanks for your, your, your partnership up here. I appreciate, uh, the input, uh, that, that makes us consider or reconsider or, or reaffor, enforce, uh, the county's goals to try to maintain the agriculture industry in a viable, viable condition that will prosper, uh, on into the years, and, and being able to, uh, share with us your personal, personal experiences in that regard, and I agree with you, uh, it's all about the water. And, uh, I see municipalities around us in the Southern California, uh, pursuing, uh, desalination as a viable option, uh, recognizing the costs involved, and somewhere down the road, I think this, this county may have to do the same thing. Anyway, thank you a lot. I appreciate your friendship.
Come on, let's go home.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.